Yeah, I'm trying to go back in my head.
Actually, most of the table is not debatable, so I'm not going to say anything. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on. Thank you. We'll make sure that we get that distributed.
Well, we have to vote.
Oh, we have to vote, sorry.
On the motion to table.
Yes, it's undebatable, but we do have to vote. All those in favor of tabling this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
That's really close. Okay, I'm going to ask for a standing vote, just because that was so close to me. All those who are in favor.
I can withdraw my resolution for now, but if you guys want to learn a little bit more about it, go to Slaying Hardler, the Slaying Hardler page.
Right, again, this is a resolution, and it's already in our state constitution, so, yeah, absolutely. So we will bring it back in September at our meeting. Okay, now we're going to move on to matters of interest. One of the reasons why this meeting was called is because we, you know, we are having some issues within the committee, those that are representing us, that don't really represent the committee as a whole, and there have been a lot of complaints, and we, you know, we have addressed some of those things, but that was one of the reasons why the majority of the committee has called this meeting to order, and so, or sent out for this meeting. So saying that, do I have anyone who wants to make a motion?
This is about a, basically, I move to censor Stephanie Johnson. My name is Ty Johnston. Let's see, to censor Stephanie Johnson, basically for her egregious behavior as of late, which includes, but not limited to violating our rules, and our principles, targeting our members, and that's what really got to me, is targeting our members through false police reports, and the intentional spreading of lies with the intention of hurting their reputation. And she, the final nail in the coffin was stating that she doesn't care what happens to the SCRC or our country. These allegations and everything that I just read off, they're explained in the complaint that was filed today with the county chairman. I also move to expel, pending the outcome of the results into this investigation, following the complaint that was filed. That's my motion.
Okay, so your motion is for censure of Stephanie Johnson and to expel her from further meetings until the impending investigation is completed, is that correct?
Correct.
Second? Do I have any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
So maybe we should wait Stephanie Johnson to come here and defend herself.
So there will be, there will be an investigation that was filed with the chair today. That investigation, he will appoint an investigation committee, and then they will report to the, make a finding, and report to the executive committee.
Bill Ben to the lobby.
Well, that's.
Yes, Jennifer, go ahead. She was invited, she was notified, she actually sent me this email, and so, this is what she sent me, so she's very aware of it, and she said she is not coming. And it was also in this email that she said she does not care, a second, she does not care what happens to SCRC, and actually be glad to be rid of the SCRC. And then she goes on and says she doesn't care what happens to the county. So this was just sent to me a week ago? Yes. Yeah, so, and so she was aware, and so she absolutely could be here tonight, that was kind of the plan, she could be here to defend herself, but she chose not to. So, in light of this and a myriad of other things, the motion has been made to expel her pending the investigation.
Yeah, I just find Stephanie, like, too sweet to do, I mean, I get it, but...
Stephanie Johnson?
Yeah. Yeah, she's on the table. She's on the table.
Okay, make sure that we're addressing the chair, please.
Yeah, I mean, I know the last time we were here, there was some talk about her, like, me and JP, and everybody's going to walk all over her, but, I mean, nobody goes into a job knowing what the job entitles, and if you're so godly people, then you should look through them and help them out.
So there...
And show the way, not, you know, like I said, I'm new, I don't know, this is all from what I'm seeing here, like...
Okay, well, thank you. Do I have anyone else that would like to speak for or against?
I think I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so, the complaint was sent to our chair, Frank Curtis, and then it is up to him to elect a committee, an investigative committee. The investigative committee will do their investigation, and they will do a report of their findings and send to the executive committee board, okay? Yes, sir?
Yes.
Raymond, could you, could you please stand and speak up, I can't hear you. So the censoring is stating that we strongly disagree with her actions, right, and the having her to not come to any of the meetings to cause any more chaos, again, it's pending You can vote against it, but we're going to, we're going to move on because it is on the floor and it has been seconded. Any other? Any other? No, okay, we're going to move on with the vote. All those in favor of the censor and expelling of Stephanie Johnson pending the outcome of the investigation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you, the ayes have it. We're going to move on. Do we have any more?
My name is Amber Johnston. I would like to make a motion to censor Allison Gray for egregious behavior, and to expel her from future meetings until investigation, following the complaint against her has been concluded. The allegation against her include using FOIA in a retaliatory manner through her Slaying County Republican email, her effort to block the executive committee from discussing contributions to Republican candidates, and her participation in a secret executive meeting intended to circumvent executive members who disagreed with her position.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? This is for the censorship and expulsion of Allison Gray pending the investigation, yes, sir?
I'd like to expand the whole Gray family.
I would like to second that. We need to, we need, we need to stay with, we need to stay with what facts are, please. Okay, the motion has been made, the motion has been made on the floor, do I have any other points of discussion?
Madam Chair, I think that was a substantive motion.
Was that a friendly amendment? I believe you meant friendly amendment, right?
So you're asking for a friendly amendment to her motion, do you accept the friendly amendment?
I'm willing to accept that. Allison, Angela, and Scott, yes.
So the friendly motion is that it spans to Allison, Scott, and Angela, is that correct? Okay, so that's the friendly motion?
Can I speak in favor of this motion?
Yes.
Okay, so, what? So, you know, I have seen some of what Scott Gray and Allison Gray have done, okay? I've seen them hit other members against each other, I've seen them just try to control things, I've seen him yell at our guests when he doesn't like what they say, I saw him yell at Paul Childress, because he didn't think he was doing something he thought he should. It's just not how we should be treating each other, and I believe that it is a cause of a lot of the vitriolic conflict in this committee right now, and I think we were much better before they were here, and I think we're going to be much better when they're not here. And so I think this is a great idea, and it's not that, we're not saying he absolutely did this, right, and he's going to get, you know, kicked out for sure, but he is so toxic, his whole family is toxic, that we don't need them around.
Thank you. Make sure we address the chair.
Got my back, Ruth?
Here, Rebecca, I'd like to speak against that, because that particular family helped us win the RPA issue this year, that is still open, because it was recessed instead of adjourned to finalize it. It needs to be finalized first, and they were very supportive and helped us get through that situation that was just seemed impossible, and they helped Ms. Lancaster, they worked together to get all this stuff accomplished, now you want to kick them out of the curve because you don't like some little kicker that went out. It is, it is.
Point of order, point of order, point of order, we're going to address the chair, guys, we're not going to speak out of order.
We need to take care of the RPA issue first, foremost, then we need to, then we need to work on our ballots and our elections for November here in our own commensary council before we start kicking people out the door.
Thank you, Mr. Beck, for your input. Do I have anyone else that would speak for or against? Ms. Lancaster?
Can we bring up some of the stuff that they've done so the mayor can hold them when it happens?
Okay, we're going to, we're going to address the chair, point of order, we're going to address the chair, please.
Okay, Madam Chair, I am speaking in favor of that. The reason why, I do believe that we should censure and expel Allison and Scott. The reason why is because there has been egregious behavior that has occurred. I personally have spoken with them about that, the behavior has not changed, and that is why many of us, and I'm not the only person that's spoken with them, we have tried very hard to keep it just between us, but that's not working, so we have to take another step forward to curb that vitriol. So, I, again, I am in favor of that. Now, as to Scott, there is a very lengthy complaint that was filed earlier today, and I will tell you some of my experiences, just so you guys know what we're dealing with. About a year ago, when he was representing Stephanie Johnson in her campaign, he started a rumor that Ron Nichols was a pedophile. That, to me, is disgusting, and I confronted him about that and made it clear that that should never happen again. There have been other attempts like that. He said one of our very well-known elected officials, that I would say I'm a huge fan of, that he claimed that she had cheated on her husband, absolutely no proof of that. These kind of things are very damaging to people, this can destroy families, this can destroy reputations, it is incredibly hurtful. I am for, as you guys know, speaking out and being truthful and exposing what's done in darkness, but what is occurring here is just evil, in my opinion. You cannot say those kind of things about people for the purpose of hurting or winning a race, or whatever, I don't know what the purpose or the intention was, I just know that it was wrong. And so, there are multiple things like that, but most recently, Stephanie Johnson claimed that she had spoken with the Grays, and following that conversation, there was a false police report that was filed against Candy and Stephanie Duke, and I think the majority of us in here can agree, these are two very upstanding, wonderful women who have done a lot for this committee and for our community, and to have allegations such as bribery and blackmail levied against them is appalling, and we, as a group, should stand up against that because it is wrong, and that is bullying behavior, and I absolutely will stand up against that, because I'm not going to be silent in the face of bullying, even if they're supposed to be my comrades, or if they helped me with something in the past. I can be grateful for what they've done, but I can also call out when it's being, when there is evil behavior, and that's what I'm going to do. So I am in favor of expelling and censoring Allison and Scott, I'm not in favor of expelling or censoring Angela, because I have not seen that level of behavior directly from her. I have seen it from the other two, so I'm probably going to vote against the motion as it is right now, where we are censoring and expelling all four, but I would vote in favor of censoring and expelling Scott and Allison pending the outcome of the investigation.
Thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Mr. Ray, would you be willing to modify your friendly amendment?
Call to question.
Call to question. Okay, on the call to question, we will be voting on censoring and expelling Angela Gray, Allison Gray, and Scott Gray. Am I correct on that? Someone, yes. Okay, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it.
I want to stand and count.
Okay. We will do a standing count.
We'll do, we'll do a standing count, and if you are already standing and you are a voting member, raise your hand.
All those in favor, say, stand, stand with aye.
If you need to be an active voting member.
I'm not a voting member.
We're confused, we're confused. If you are in favor of expelling Angela, Allison, and Scott, you need to stand.
Active voting member.
Point of information.
Yes, ma'am.
Has there been a complaint filed against Angela Gray?
No.
No, the point of, the point of information was, has there been a complaint filed against Angela Gray, and the answer to that is no. There has been complaints filed against, there has been a complaint filed against Scott Gray and Allison Gray. You had a question?
If this fails, can we read the motion under due exception, or can we like to start it out?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so we're going to start counting, so the, this is, you stand if you are in favor of censoring and expelling Angela Gray, Allison Gray, and Scott Gray.
All right, 48.
Okay. Now, stand if you are not in favor. The ayes have it, so we are passing to expel, censor and expel Allison Gray, Scott Gray, and Angela Gray. Pending an investigation, yes, yes. Were there any other matters of interest that anyone needed when it came to censor expulsion or removal of certain people? Yes, Stephanie, you're in front of us.
I motion to censor Frank Curtis for consistently failing to apply and follow the rules for participating in the slander of fellow committee members in the community, for attempting to cancel a properly called meeting, for his intentional failure to notify all executive members of an executive meeting with the purpose to circumvent those who disagree with him, and for sowing division in our community for personal gain.
Okay, so the motion, the motion and the second on the floor is to censor and expel, censor, sorry, thank you, censor Scott, Frank Curtis, our chair. Yes, sir?
Should it be censored and sustained until the investigation is completed? I got suspended a lot from school, but I never got expelled.
So the censure is stating that we have a strong disagreement with how he has conducted as a chair. Expulsion, so, I'm using those interchangeably, expulsion, expelling them from the meetings pending until the investigation is completed.
So it's, they're being expelled for a specific amount of time, so, and that's what the motion is, is they're being expelled, no longer allowed to attend the meetings until the investigation is concluded, so, under Roberts' rules, it is appropriate term.
If we do that with Frank, then who's going to lead the investigation that the executive committee will do on everybody else?
He's not being expelled at all, he's, it is censored, and all that is, is stating that we are making a statement of strong disagreement in how he has conducted himself as a chair. It is not removing him, it is not expelling him.
I understand, so he will still?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
What did you say he'll do?
I'm sorry?
What did you say he'll still do?
He will still be the chair of the committee, this is just a censure, is saying that we are, we are given a strong disagreement on how he has conducted himself as a chair. Okay, any other questions? This is just for censure, yes. All of those in favor of censoring Frank Curtis, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Do we have any other matters of interest concerning censure expulsion or removal of certain members? No, so we're going to move on to business, and in this, we're going to talk about meetings for the remainder of the year.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that September's meeting, which has been called, that that will be our last formal meeting for this year, 2024, and that in lieu of an October, a formal October meeting, that we encourage everybody to get out and campaign very hard for our Republican candidates, and let's get them elected in November, and then in November, in lieu of having a formal meeting, we'll have a watch party, and in December, we will do as we usually do and join the Slaying County Republican Women for their Christmas potluck, and then we will resume meetings in January of 2025.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is second, okay. Any discussion? Yes, Raymond? I mean, I'm sorry, yes. Tell me your name again. Drew Martin, thank you. Yes, sir. And I know that in our September, in our September meeting, we plan on addressing those things to back our elected officials. Yes, yes, yes.
So with our new formed executive committee, I know the intention is to provide contributions to our Republican nominees, and so I believe, based on my understanding, is that they will be having an executive meeting, and they will be making a recommendation as to how to financially support our Republican nominees at our September meeting.
That, that has been discussed, yes. Okay, Mr. Lancaster.
I speak in favor, and I would ask the executive committee to please consider maxing out Paul Childress, who's not been paying anything from his own committee.
I'm happy to say that the Republican Women donated $500 to Paul Childress. Yes, sir.
Maybe you need to wait until your September meeting. Who's the marketing chair?
So, I'm going to allow Ms. Lancaster to address that.
I still have to...
No, that's, that's...
I just have to address, I have to address the chair. So, the marketing chair, under our rules, it's under Article II, it says that all chairs and members of standing committee and ad hoc committees shall be appointed by our county chair. So, Scott Gray is the current chair of our marketing committee, and there are no other members on that committee, and unfortunately, it is not up to the body to elect members to that committee, but I believe come January, there will be significant changes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
We have over half of our JPs Democratic.
Yes, sir.
We have many states, Angela, Democratic Republicans.
Yes.
Yet I have not seen one advocacy post or mention of any of our Republican nominees.
Yes, sir.
I don't think we can act on that fast enough. This committee has spent a whole lot of time, many hours, including tonight, with very little mention. One afternoon, early voting starts, and we're talking about one more meeting before we act. This can't happen. Our opponents are unified and have 38 advocacy posts in the last 25 days for their nominees. I plead with this committee to do something and do it now for our nominees of our Republican Party, local and state.
Yes, your motion is on the floor.
You had a second.
You had a second, yes.
I'll make a motion after we vote.
Okay, so let's, let's vote on the motion, I hear you, let's vote on the motion that's on the floor. Jennifer's motion was to not have the, to have the September meeting as planned, it's been called, to not have the October, and to please get out and campaign with our elected officials, help them get elected, to have a watch party the night of the election in November, and to join with the Slaying County Republican Women, as we always do, for a December potluck. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Did you have another?
I guess I'm going to make a motion, and if anybody has a better idea, please just offer a friendly amendment, but I make a motion that we add Mary Lewis to the Facebook page to help with posting and promoting of our Republican candidates, and so she, she is to be given access and be made an admin effective immediately onto our Slaying County Republican Committee Facebook page.
Second.
So the motion on the floor is that Mary Lewis be added immediately as administrator on our Facebook page, and that she can start making posts immediately, she will have access. We do have a second, any other discussion? Yes, sir.
While you're doing that, since we're calling a little shake up, Jennifer.
Can you address the chair, please?
Yes, Chair, should we also look at they changing the access to the Facebook that everybody censored tonight has access to already?
Yes.
You're kind of shooting yourself in the foot here by not doing that.
I, I get what you're saying.
That's my friendly amendment.
Your friendly amendment, okay, so he's, he's saying his friendly amendment is since Scott Gray, Allison Gray, the Gray family is censored and expelled pending the investigation, that they be removed access, is that right? Is that what you're stating?
I'll clarify even more, everyone that tonight that was censored should not have access until the investigations are complete, and your credentials should be changed until...
I think that admin is Scott Gray and Frank.
Yeah.
Scott Gray and Frank are the ones that are posting right now.
Correct, yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, we can, I, I mean, I agree with that, it's the execution that I'm concerned about. But, yeah, I'm sorry.
I make a friendly.
Oh, yes.
We just need to redo all social media, because we also have an X account, also Slane County.
Yes, we do have an X account, so you're, you're wanting to want all social media into that?
I want just, since they have control of it, get rid of all that and redo.
I don't know that I would accept an amendment to get new pages, but I am in favor of, and the reason why, I think, I mean, I love where you're thinking, where you're headed, it's just it takes a lot of work to get those things set up, and we may have to do that if we can't get admin administration privileges switched over, but I'd like us to try to just get new people on there to get control. I am in favor of saying that those who have been censured, censured cannot make any public statement on behalf of S C R C pending the outcome of the investigation. Is that, and then I think Mr. Webb probably has a really good idea.
Mr. Webb, you're recognized.
Two points, one you know.
Can you please address the chair?
In October, there won't be a meeting, and November, there won't be a meeting, will there be one in December or not?
In December, the meeting, well, in December, as we always do, we come together with the Slane County Republican Women and do a potluck, so that is what we'll do in December.
The reason I ask that is, if someone is not able to go to those three events, October, November, and December, that would not be counted against them as they're a main active member, since those are not called meetings. That's a question. They're not meetings.
Right, they're not official meetings, correct, they are not official meetings. Yes.
I have one other motion, I think. The judge, Mary.
Are you saying a friendly amendment to her motion, because we already have a motion on the floor?
What's the motion on the floor?
I don't even remember. It had something to do with restricting access.
Restricting access.
Is, I think the judge made a very impassioned plea about supporting candidates. What, and since the body is not going to meet to make that decision, why don't we give that authority to the executive committee to meet, make that decision, since they will be meeting and able to meet quicker than we would? That would be my amendment, if that works. It's not telling the executive committee what to do, but it's giving the executive committee authority to make contributions to Republican candidates.
And I agree with where you're headed with that, absolutely. I would say that we will have a meeting in September, so that's coming up very quickly, it's just the first Thursday in September, so our executive team should have an opportunity to meet and then make those recommendations, and then we can vote on them in September and get those checked out.
Why don't we put this in, though, as a spare time? Let's say that doesn't happen.
Are you saying that the September meeting doesn't happen?
No, no, let's say that no action is taken in September meeting, for whatever reason,
Well, the.
And that the executive committee will be authorized in the event it doesn't occur there to take action to support Republicans.
So the executive committee that was voted in tonight is very passionate about getting together before that meeting and discussing those distributions.
If you assure me that it's going to happen and you're going to support our Republicans, that's all I mean?
We, we are going to do that, we are going to support our Republicans. Thank you.
So where are we?
Okay, so where we're at, thank you, Mr. Doyle, but back to what's on the floor to be voted on is that.
We're going to restrict access.
We're going to restrict access as to everyone who is censured, and Mary will take that over and start doing all social media posts, including Facebook and X account.
I'd also like to add Richard Mills as somebody who will have access to our marketing and social media platforms to help with the promotion of our Republican candidates, so those two individuals.
So Mary and Richard Mills both having access and posting, promoting our elected officials, and removing those that are censured pending the investigation, starting immediately. Any other discussion about that?
Frank's not expelled, he's just, there's going to be no investigation unless somebody filed a complaint against him, so he would still have access.
I believe that the motion on the floor is all those that are censured will be removed. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All opposed? The ayes have it, effective immediately, all that were censured here tonight are removed from all social media, and Mary and Richard Mills will start doing all of our social media postings. Yes, ma'am.
What, how will we go forward if this is refused, or if the executive committee is not?
What was the question?
How, so the question on the floor is how will we go forward if, if that is refused, or if the executive committee is not recognized, the executive committee is recognized by this body as voted in tonight? How we go forward if they refuse to give over those credentials to that? I believe that, I believe that it would be appropriate, that that would be another cause of action for censure and filing a complaint, and that would put us in a position, I firmly believe, that we would have to start a new social media, which really, if you know anything about social media, as I do, is it really hinders when you have to start something over to build your algorithm, and so that, that is what I believe would have to happen. Does anyone else have a comment about that? But I believe that the executive committee will need to get together, that needs to be a point of discussion at the executive committee meeting. Okay. I believe there was one more item in reference to business.
Last motion, so we, we're going to need a group to go ahead and plan the watch party in November. I'm going to nominate Terry Kellum, Candy Cox, Pat Roberts, Amanda Bernard, Cody Crumpson, Peggy Wilcox, Mary Lewis, Carol Tessier, Elaine Murray, and Kim Baker to oversee the watch party organization.
Okay, so the watch party and the Christmas party, those people that she just named, will kind of oversee getting those things put together as a committee. Do I have a second? Have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? Yes, ma'am. The committee will get together, and, you know, that will be announced once the committee gets together, and we will send out those announcements. And hopefully on Facebook, too. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the committee as named, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? Who seconded that, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Okay, yes, sir.
Point of information.
Point of information.
So who's going to be appointing the investigative committee, is that going to be Frank, is he going to be appointing people, or is it?
Yes, so according to the RPA rules, Frank will appoint the investigative committee of the complaints that were sent to him today, they were sent to him this afternoon, he will appoint the investigative committee, they will do their investigation, and they will report back to the executive committee with their findings. Yes, sir.
I should say in the event Frank doesn't want to, what's the force of action?
In the event that Frank does not want to uphold what the chair is supposed to do, because he does not, you understand, he does not do the investigation, he appoints.
I absolutely understand.
Okay, so that is a really good question, and I would like some information on that. I haven't looked that far into the Robert Rules of Order. Yes, I understand, I appreciate your question.
And I think we could even rope Doyle into this conversation, so the rules, as you said, do require that he shall appoint the committee to investigate. If he just refuses, that's clearly a blatant refusal to follow the rules. So we'll, you know, I, I think we could be here all night going through hypotheticals, and, not that they're unreasonable to ask, I just think we could be here a while, you know, and I think what you're probably really getting at is are we just going to let it go? No, we're not, we'll just have to see how they respond, and then we'll decide how we want to move forward as a group.
The point we get next point was, our chair is supposed to appoint, if he doesn't follow the chain of command, if you also censured your first vice as well, so do we go by the chain of command, or are there other actions that should be taken?
I understand that, yes, Mr. Doyle.
For you, Jennifer, if he doesn't act, it's failure to act, and it's a ground to remove.
Correct, correct. So do you have, do you have any input according to the rules where it says he shall, if he does not, if he refuses to?
I think at that point, failure to act.
Correct, yes.
May I, may I comment one more time?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I think to Mr. Doyle's question, I hope I'm answering this, so the investigative committee, assume, again, assuming he appoints them, they just make a recommendation to the executive committee. If he does not appoint an executive, an investigative committee, I guess what we could do is we could just, that would be his failure to act, but then the next step would be for the executive committee to make a decision on that, so we could probably just move forward. If they pass those deadlines, don't make the recommendation within the required timeframe, then the executive committee, I think, could then go ahead and act and make the vote based on the information that they have without the recommendation of the investigative committee, because the investigative, the executive committee does not have to take the investigative committee's recommendation, they get to do whatever they deem is proper. So I would say in that situation, we could move to remove the chairman if he fails, willfully fails to act, and then let the executive committee, as it was voted on tonight, make that decision. Then, of course, the individual, if they're unhappy with the result, they can then appeal to this body, and the body gets the final say, as always, so does that answer your question?
It does, at least the other question didn't answer.
Angela Gray.
Angela, Angela Gray. Go ahead and have a seat.
Don't you thought about that, Doyle?
Okay, okay. There's three people on the investigative committee that is appointed. Yes, ma'am.
Is it three people from here?
It's three, three people within our committee that they will appoint, at the Slane County Republican Committee.
Outside.
According to the rules, he has to appoint through the committee, three people through the committee, that's according to the rules. Yes, sir. Yes, so 10 days to appoint, let me grab that, because I, I know that real well. So, Article II, Section 9, this part's about removal, okay? When you go down to. C, yes. C, charges against any member or officer except the chairman or county election commissioner shall be made to the chairman, who shall within 10 days appoint three qualified county committee members to serve on the investigative committee, which will investigate the charges. Within 10 days following the appointment, the investigative committee shall furnish to the person charged a copy of the charges, setting a time and place for the person charged to be heard, within 30 days of the appointment of the investigative committee. The investigation committee shall make a written report of its findings, including a recommendation to the executive committee. Within 10 days after receiving the recommendation from the investigative committee, the executive committee, taking into consideration the recommendation of the investigation committee, will determine whether to remove the member or to report such decision to the secretary of the county committee. In the event of removal, the chairman shall notify the person removed in writing. An appeal of the executive committee's decision may be made by filing a written notice with the secretary within 30 days upon receipt, of which the secretary shall place the matter on the agenda for the next meeting of the county committee for final determination. Does that answer your question, Mr. Brumley? Yes. 10 days to appoint the investigator. Yes, that is correct. Any other questions?
Madam Chairman, read Section E, if he does not fulfill his duties.
Yes, Section E, if he does not fulfill his duties, the chairman may be removed by the county committee in a special meeting called by no less than one-third of the active committee membership. The chairman shall be removed by a secret ballot vote of not less than two-thirds of the membership present and voting of the county committee. In case a meeting is called for this purpose, the chairman shall be given at least 10 days written notice of the charges and the time and place of the meeting, and shall be entitled to be heard.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye!
All those opposed? We are adjourned, y'all have a good night.
That concludes the, this meeting, is adjourned, several decisions were made, there'll be more updates on what happens at some later time. There'll be more updates on what happens at a later time.